2008 and 2012. So he comes to us with a mega load of political experience. I give you Trey Arnold.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. You know, definitely, it's definitely an honor and a privilege to be in this position, to be working for the Dallas County Democratic Party in the facet that I serve as the Political Director. It's definitely an honor and definitely a privilege to be the moderator for this Town Hall. I know that's cliche to say, besides every good man, there's a good woman. But in this case, with the Speaker that we have, besides every good woman, there's a great man. Because she definitely holds her own. Dr. Elba Garcia, she's the Dallas County Commissioner, District Four. She embodies new breed of professional women in the 21st century. She is not only a community leader, but a wife and a mother of two sons. She also is a dental, she's also a dentist with her own private practice, holding two doctorates. Also, she serves as a role model for women, Latinos, immigrants, and anyone who strives to succeed. She has served on Dallas City Council from 2001 to 2009. Commissioner Garcia was unanimously chosen by her peers to serve as Mayor Pro Tem and Deputy Mayor Pro Tem. She is, she was elected to serve as Dallas County Commissioner for District Four in November of 2010, becoming the first Latino to serve on the Dallas County Commissioners Court and is currently serving her third term. She definitely, like I said, embodies the woman of the 21st century. She wears a lot of hats and she definitely is a pillar of our community here in Dallas County. I present, I introduce to some and present to all Dr. Elba Garcia, County Commissioner, District Four.
Thank you, Trey. Thank you so much. Good afternoon. I'm privileged to be with all of you this afternoon. Bienvenue. You know, glad to have you, Trey. And I want to start by thanking, of course, the Dallas County Democratic Party and especially our County Chair, Ms. Carol Donovan, for hosting this Town Hall to all the sponsors. And of course, Ms. Donovan has always been fabulous in getting all of us within the Democratic Party, all the precinct chairs and all the constituency engaged in what's going on in not only in the county, but also in the party and in all the community as well. So, thank you so much, Carol, for your leadership. I really appreciate you. And of course, when we're talking about the census, it's something that all of us need to know and be caring in. I mean, I know a lot of people says, "Well, that's not a political issue." But it's, as always, the way you want to see it because it's about identity. It's about fairness. For me, the census means not only who we are as a community, but the identity of who we are as a nation. And it's very important that all of us get counted. And to say that we are under counted at this moment is something that concerns us, you know, concerns all of us because we really know that a full and complete count is extremely critical to make sure that all our voices are heard at every level of government. This is the foundation of our democracy. And either way you want to see it, after voting is one of the most important things that we can do. And again, thank you, Ms. Carol, for the opportunity to engage members of the party in making sure that all of Dallas County gets counted in the 2020 Census.
Thank you so much. We definitely, this definitely would not be able, we wouldn't be able to do this without our series sponsors. We'd like to thank Tillison Law, also the Honorable Carol and Dan Donovan. Also, we have a couple of meeting sponsors. We have Terry Barker, the Honorable Terry Barker. We have Dr. Catalina Garcia, Hamilton and Wingo. We also have the Honorable Marcy Helfen, Robert Book, and also Scott Perez LLP. So we definitely like to thank our sponsors for helping us have the Town Hall Series. You know, definitely with this pandemic going on, you know, we definitely want to make sure that people stay engaged, people stay notified of what's going on, especially all things political. And then hopefully moving forward, you know, this is just a temporary situation. And definitely, like I said, once we get past this, we'll be able to move forward. So thank you again to our sponsors. So this is, like I said, this is definitely, it's going to be a Q and A. We'll have questions coming in. Dr. Garcia, then from there, you know, you just answer the questions because definitely the census is very important. And we, you know, there's no reason, no excuse for people not to fill out the census, being that, you know, we're in the confines of our homes and it only takes five, 10 minutes. You know, I think that's what people don't realize. It doesn't take long to fill out the census. It only takes five, 10 minutes because you need to be counted. You know, these funds is going to be allocated, definitely to make their, you know, especially go into a lot of these disenfranchised communities, black and brown communities. You know, they definitely need it because, you know, it's very important, very key. So I definitely appreciate the work that you're doing. Like I said, you know, with the census and informing, to keep people informed with that.
Yes, Trey, and you know, we have some numbers already. As you know, with this pandemic, the deadline has been postponed till October 30th. So we have time. And it's the first time in every census that you can do it by phone. You can do it in your iPad, internet, and of course, you know, by the mail. I mean, by this time, everybody has already received their envelope. But if you haven't, if you moved, if you, for whatever reason, did not get it, you still can fill out the census without the number. So there's no excuse for not filling out the census at this point. For the first time, it's very easy, like you say, very quickly, only 10 questions. And there's no wrong answer. You know, people call me and raise ethnicity, "Well, what about if, you know, this or that question?" The reality is that there's no wrong question, wrong answer in any of them. But what really concerns me right now is, as you have a few slides there, is that the countywide response is 52.4% as of May 6th, and the Texas response rate is 52%. So that means that we are right there. The national response is 57. So there's no excuse for Dallas County to be below of the count right now. We really need to make everybody, you know, fill out the census. We have several SIP codes in Dallas County, and I want to mention them because for the people that are listening, if you're in that SIP code, I want to challenge you. And I'm going to talk about a challenge later on that I have for all my friends that are with us today. The SIP codes with the lowest response rates are 75220, 75240, 75229, 75208, 75204, 75206, 75042, 75224, 75238, 75243, 75227, and 75203. So I want everybody to write those SIP codes down. And if you're in that SIP code, please call family, friends, anyone that you know right now, and ask them to fill out the census.
Yes, and if you're just tuning in, we have Dr. Elba Garcia, County Commissioner. She's also a spokesperson and worker and helps out with the census. You know, so like I, like we've been saying, it's just very important and very key that we get it online, fill out the census, it's quick and easy. You know, and it doesn't take long. It doesn't take long at all. So like I said, we definitely, you know, have to make sure that we do that. I have, actually have a question. Someone asked, "Does the, their census count even if they don't complete all of the questions?"
It's better that you complete every single question. I mean, definitely, we want to fill every single one of them.
Okay, okay, yeah, that, that was one of the questions that was, that was sent to me because they weren't for certain if, you know, all of the questions weren't answered, would there, would it count? So that's definitely, definitely good to know. So just in the past, and I just wanted to ask, what is typically the popular, the numbers as far as just with the percentage of our black and brown communities, with the percentage of them actually filling out and completing the census?
Yes, definitely. Usually, these SIP codes are minority, mainly minority SIP codes. But, you know, right now, Dallas County is very diverse. You can see that in, I mean, we have all this information by Commissioners District. And I know that District One, which is Commissioner Daniels, and District Four has the lowest count. And that's why I am here with all of you today. We really need to make the numbers one. Actually, District Three, Commissioners Price District, is at 52.1. So is ahead of One and Four. But District Two, which is Commissioner Koch, is at 61.2. So yes, the answer to your questions is minority SIP codes, mainly minority communities are the ones that are not filling out the census.
Okay, okay. Also, definitely want to know, so being that a lot of times, you know, we have a census every 10 years and, you know, typically, you know, we have someone come to our door and ask us, you know, you know, "Have we filled out the census?", being that we're in this current situation that we're in. What would you offer as an alternative route to try to get people to complete the census?
Well, you're completely right, Trey. You know, we had allocated money and funds for people to knock on your door as we've done in other censuses. Sadly, with the pandemic going on right now, that's not going to happen. At least, we don't know, we don't have a timeline at this point. But I gave Judge, you know, one small presentation, and you can see there, you know, how to complete the 2020 Census form. And I want, hopefully, we can put it on the screen. It has how to complete the census online by visiting, you know, the website, my2020census.gov or dallasenses.com. You know, we have it right there on the screen. Perfect. Thank you, Judge. That's it. And then, of course, you can always pick up the phone. Some people prefer to call, and there's the number in English and Spanish. So there's, you can go ahead and call from your phone right now. Like I said, there are only 10 questions. And then you can always mail your form. And there is the questionnaire for you to go ahead and mail it to. If you have your envelope that probably got to you in the mail, go ahead and fill it out. And of course, you know, we know that by 2022, the Hispanic population will become the nation's largest population, 65% of the state's growth. And we want to be sure that all of us get counted.
Thank you again. If you're just tuning in, we have Dr. Elba Garcia. She's the County Commissioner, District Four, just kind of giving us some tidbits and things that we need to know about this year's census. Also, I'd be amiss if I wouldn't, thanks to series sponsors. We have Tillison Law Firm, also the Honorable Carol and Dan Donovan. We also have Terry Barker. We have Dr. Catalina Garcia, Hamilton and Wingo. Also, definitely have Marcy Helfen, Robert Book, and Scott Perez LP. Thank you guys again for being sponsors with these Town Halls at the Dallas County Democratic Party, our hosts. We definitely appreciate it. I also have another question, Dr. Garcia, with, especially, you know, with the Latino community. I want to know, what would you say that's a big deterrent for people filling out the census forms? What do you think that the big hindrance and, you know, what's holding people back from actually filling it out?
Well, as you know, there was some rumors that the, you know, your legal status was going to be asked in the census and that this information can be shared with, you know, entities like ICE. I mean, in the Latino community, we all know that fear has been something that has been pushed for a long time, and the census was not the exception. One of the things that I've been saying all over around is that is not true. This data is not shareable with anyone. There's no question about citizenship, Trey. And more importantly, there's no, nobody's going to ask you for a bank account. Nobody's going to ask you for your social security. Nobody's going to ask you for any information that is secure. This is information that is only going to be used for data analysis, mainly for resources. We, the census interest is to know what is the population going to look like, what kind of resources they are going to need. And obviously, that's what is so important when we talk about schools, when we talk about transportation, when we talk about quality of life, how many people we're going to have in the next 10 years. That's what this information is going to be used for. And of course, political representation. Remember, guys, that here is where the different districts for representation are going to be drawn from, this data. And it's not a surprise that if we don't get counted, we still don't have a congressman and a senator that, you know, are minority, that are Latinos in this area. And unless we get counted, that probably will not happen. So it's very, very important that you fill out the form and that you ask your family and friends to fill it out as well.
Yes, it's definitely a civic duty, you know, because, you know, just political wise, you know, it definitely will be affected by the redistricting of, you know, the districts and how these maps are cut, having different representatives, having different senators and things like that. So it's very, very key and very important that we get out there and we complete the census. So it is definitely, definitely, definitely important.
$675 billion, Trey, are on the table. When we talk about how much money, we're talking about 30 to 40 million dollars a year with a 1% undercount. So that gives you an idea that is millions of dollars what we will lose. Money that, hey, we are paying in taxes already. So it needs to come back to the communities.
I agree, I agree. Also, I have a question. So with, so according to quite a few sources, many stakeholders were disappointed that the Census Bureau did not include additional options for sexual orientation and gender identity in the 2020 Census. Do you have any ideals or thoughts as to why this was not included?
I don't know why it wasn't included. Obviously, I mean, when you're talking about race and when you're talking about ethnicity, I don't think that there's any, you know, you shouldn't include everything else. But I have no idea why those questions were not included.
Okay, you know, and you know, like I said, you know, we definitely don't want to leave anyone else. So that's why, you know, the question came in, and I definitely think that's key in everything. So, and as far as just the census, so is, tell people how important it is not to miss out anyone, any kids or anything like that, when you're completing the census, especially when you have more than one person.
Yeah, Trey, that's one of the things that we tell everyone. The hard-to-count population is, especially those families, as you say, that there's from seniors all the ways to babies. Remember, you should include everybody, even if it's just born, as long as it's born before we finish the count in October, should be included. Everybody that lives in the family and everybody that lives at home. It doesn't matter if they go out a few months, if they come back, you know, they should be counted as part of the, of the family. Obviously, households, seniors, minority citizens, renters, homeless individuals, doesn't matter. I mean, anyone, everyone should be counted.
Okay, thank you again. And when it comes to populations difficult to count, what are your ideals and thoughts on how we can get a more accurate count on the homeless population, whether on the streets or in the shelter for the census?
We have several organizations that are working with different, with the Metro, Metro Homeless Alliance. We are working with the City of Dallas. We're trying to be sure that all these hard-to-count populations are being counted. But obviously, anyone that has any ideas, we're doing different challenges with young people, trying to motivate them. Where I'm doing a challenge with Ignite, Irma and Hill School, trying to get into their social media platforms, so they invite their friends. Obviously, we're also doing initiatives with influencers. So if you're one of those influencers, and I know a lot of you are watching, please contact us. I mean, we would love to talk to you, see how you can help us. I know that nowadays and with shelter in the home, you know, a lot of people being at home, that is going to be the, probably the best way to count people, just getting by platforms. And I want to also issue a challenge to all my friends in the Democratic Party. I know that Ms. Carol Donovan is working with some of the precinct chairs. She was kind enough to give us a list. So as a precinct chair, if you're, you know, with us, joining us today in this meeting, you can call part of your precinct and motivate them. And that is my challenge today, Trey, which is pretty much to ask your family, friends, neighbors, and those in your political network to submit their census form. The person who gets the most census forms, precinct chairs, or people that are joining us today between now and June 15th will receive their choice of either $100 gift certificate from Target or $100 donated to your charity of choice. And the second place, $50, same thing. What I want is to, you know, for you to participate, to have fun, and why not? Just a little money. But it wouldn't work without you getting into the challenge. And how can you get into the challenge? You can email me at elba.garcia DDS@dallascounty.org or call my office, 214-653-36670. And we will send you the details on how to keep track of the census forms you have motivated people to submit. And, you know, we will have the results probably after June 15th. So I hope that all of you that are joining us today can join us in this challenge and make a difference.
Okay, again, if you're just tuning in, we have Dr. Elba Garcia, County Commissioner, District Four, with Dallas County. Dr. Garcia, I have questions that also came in. One person asked, "What type of challenges, if any, do you see with people filing out the census during this ongoing pandemic that's going on?"
Well, you know, obviously, it's very easy. For the first time, it's easier than ever. I think the major challenge that we've seen is that a lot of people do not have Wi-Fi, do not have connectivity. So that's why we are also pushing the phone numbers that you have in the screen. Because if you don't have connectivity, go ahead and make it over the phone. So that's one of the biggest challenges that we've seen in the populations hard to count. They don't have the Wi-Fi. They cannot do it from their iPads or they cannot do it through their phones. But, you know, if you can, you can always call. Other challenge that we've seen is, you know, people pretty much being busy right now, probably not paying attention. So we are doing a lot of work with, in all the school districts in Dallas County, the faith group community as well. And I'm right here with the Dallas County Democratic Party and with you, Trey. So we're trying to reach as many people as we can, so we can get people to get counted.
Okay, we also have another question in. Again, like I said, if you're just tuning in, we have Dr. Elba Garcia, County Commissioner, District Four, Dallas County. Also, like I said, none of this could be possible, couldn't, wouldn't be possible without our sponsors. We have Tillison Law, also the Honorable Carol and Don, Dan Donovan. We have Dr. Catalina Garcia, Wingo. Also, we have Marcy Helfen, Dr., I'm sorry, Robert Book, and also Scott Perez LP. So we definitely want to thank our sponsors for help, helping us get these Town Hall Series together because we definitely think that they're going to prove beneficial, especially with the pandemic that's going on, to make sure that people stay engaged and stay motivated because we do have runoff election that's coming up, also the big election in November. Got a, had a question come in. In 2010, research, it shows that the census was completed around at a 60% percentage rate. Do you think this year that that percentage is going to go up or down and, and why?
Well, I really hope that percentage goes up, Trey. I mean, right now, like, like you just look at the numbers, we are at the 50, you know, 52% right now in Dallas County. We have to do better. We definitely have to do better. And that's why I am challenging everyone that I find, you know, to go ahead and motivate people to do this. We need not only the resources, we also need the political influence, you know, for the redistricting, and that's another way that we can get more funds into Dallas County. And of course, it's extremely important for the future. I mean, when we talk about schools, when we talk about, you know, we continue to grow. I mean, it's not a secret that Dallas County, the North Texas region, is the fastest growing region, one of the fastest growing regions in the United States of America. How we're going to do if we don't get our fair share of representation and of funding? So I really hope that this, you know, during this census, we raise more than, we do the counting at a higher number than 60%. And, well, we're trying to do our best. I think that it's going to be challenging because this year, probably, we're not going to have as many people going door-to-door. We still hope that we can do it by August, July or August. But it's going to depend on how this pandemic goes, Trey. And I wouldn't blame people for not wanting to do this, and I wouldn't blame anyone for not wanting to open the door. But let me tell you something, if you don't want anyone to knock on your door, the best way to do it is to fill out your census early on. So that way, nobody should contact you via phone, door, anything. And of course, avoid all the scams. I mean, we start to hear some of the people trying to say that, you know, asking for bank accounts, social security numbers. Remember, the census is not going to ask you for any of that information. It's data, it's only those 10 questions. You can review the questions before you, before you fill it out, Trey. It's very simple. I know that some people have called me about, you know, their race and what are their origins questions, questions six and seven. Like I say, it, for me, is how you feel about it, Trey. Okay, if you feel you're American Indian, you have more Maya, Astin, Native American, African-American, Pacific Islander, it doesn't matter. You choose what you feel you are, okay? And this seems with origins. You know, I have, if you relate now more with your ancestors, now that with 23 and me and all those websites that suddenly tell you where you are from, probably you're feeling like you are more Mexican or Mexican-American or Chicano. There's no wrong answer. In my family, I have someone that is more Mexican-American and I have a Chicano. You know, so probably, we're going to fill that question out differently. Again, there's no wrong answer. Just fill it out with whatever you feel more close to. And that's it. Everybody counts and fill all the questions. I don't think there's any particular question that I wouldn't fill for any reason.
Okay, thank you again. And like I said, if you're just tuning in, we have Dr. Elba Garcia, County Commissioner, District Four, Okay, thank you again. And like I said, if you're just tuning in, we have Dr. Elba Garcia, County Commissioner. We, and I think that people also need to realize that just the importance of voting. You can put that, you can put it as part of completing your census in that sense because. Those are how resources are given out. Those are also how, you know, like I said, redistricting and things like that, you know. So, you know, don't complain about not having things and then not upholding your civic duty. Like Dr. Garcia said, it's only ten questions. It it maybe take you five or ten minutes to complete it. So like I said, please, everyone, make sure that you fill out the census. It doesn't take long. You can do it at the conference of your own home, computer, laptop, cell phone. It does not take long. At all. So like I said, you know, definitely make sure you do that. Dr. Garcia, we had another question come in. If someone wanted to resubmit their household response to correct a mistake. How would they go about with correcting that mistake?
You know, let me check on that, Trey. I don't know. I I let let me check on that. I don't know if you can, once you use one address that you can resubmit it. Let me check with that, Trey. I honestly, I do not know the answer. But I do wanted to also mention that the all this information is cybersecurity. So let me see if with the same address you can change the census. I really don't know if we can do that. Because as I know, the Cybersecurity Enhancement Act ensures that your data is protected once it's there. And the Census Bureau is not permitted to publicly release your response that will identify your household. So let me check on that and see if it's possible with the same household your question is, right?
Okay, no problem. We also, like I said, we have two more questions. One question is, how does the census translate into funds for the community specifically?
Specifically, you know, once they know all the data, all this data will be analyzed. And of course, if we have a very young population coming and growing in Dallas, like we know in the minority communities. Our young population is the future. Those are the resources that goes to schools that, you know, where do you need more schools? Where are you going to, based on the census data, where are the areas where you're going to need more resources for young people? What are the areas that you're going to need more resources for seniors? Where are the areas that you're going to need more transportation and communication? Obviously, the growth in the southern sector is something that we're seeing already. So we, I mean, the census translates specifically into a prediction of where the resources need to go in the future, Trey. And that's why specifically it's very important that you live in this area. You know what you're going to need in ten years. I'm going to be a senior, but my kids are probably going to have kids and they're going to need more schools and transportation.
Thank you so much. And our last question. How do you think that we best encourage Hispanics to get out and to complete the census? Just from things that you've seen and calls and things that you heard. How do you think that we can encourage our Hispanic community to get out and complete the census?
Well, I think that one of the ways that we're trying to get them together is. Explaining the need of, you know, the young generation. Let's face it. As we know, the Latino community is already a minority, majority community, but we definitely need to be sure that we are engaged. As you know, Trey, the Latino community is not monolithic. We have people not only from all Latin American with different ways of thinking, also different political ideas and political representation. So we need to be sure that we all unite in the fact that we're all in this together. Regardless of which party, regardless of where you come from, regardless of what's your ethnicity or race. You know, at the end of the day, we do have all of us to participate. And then also, well, there's some mistrust, Trey. Let's call it as it is. There's not a secret that the Latino community has been under attack for the last three and a half years. And it's when you're Latino or Latina and you hear all these attacks coming from, you know, open government. You start feeling some mistrust, some disenchanting, some part of you that says, well, I mean, I'm in the front lines. I'm essential personnel. I'm the one that is in, you know, farming is the ones that is in the meat factories. I'm the one working in the grocery stores. I'm the one in transportation. I'm the one that's getting sick. And then again, when it comes to incentives of a stimulus, I'm not getting any because. I have a daughter or I have a husband or I have a wife or someone, you know, is doesn't have legal status in this country. So we have a lot of that going on right now, a lot of businesses that feel that. There's some mistrust, there's some disenchanting. So I'm at some point disenfranchising. So we need to work on that and everywhere that I made a presentation, especially when I'm talking to Spanish media. Or Latino groups, I have to say that, listen, the only way we're going to change this. Is by making our voice be heard. And there's two ways you make that happen. The first one, of course, is voting, get involved. And the second one is, you know, filling out the census. Because the only way we're going to have the resources to change that around is by having representation that understands our communities. And the funds to grow our communities in the future.
Right. I know I said that that was the last question, but we we actually have one more question. I think that it's a real good question, especially with everything that's going on. Someone asked, with the results of the census. And you mentioned redistricting, does this discourage gerrymandering?
Well, you know, that is something that as long as we continue in the same political environment that we're right now. Gerrymandering is going to happen, but I think that it will make it harder, Trey. You know, it will make it harder to justify the gerrymandering if the numbers are right there, right? I mean, if most of it is African American and Latino, okay, gerrymander me how I, you know. I challenge you to do that. So I think that is the best way to go after my chief staff, Mr. Rudeslove, which a lot of you know. Says all the time, after voting, you know, the census is the second most important thing that you have to do. And that is true. So Trey, I want to remind everybody the challenge. You know, call us, email us, you know, a hundred dollars for you or for your organization of choice. And a fifty dollars for, you know, the second place. It's easy and especially if you're at home right now. Let's go ahead and join me in this challenge and let's make a difference together.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Garcia. And as she said before, it doesn't take long. It's ten questions. WWW dot twenty twenty census dot D G O V. You can go on there, complete the census. And like I said, you know, it's definitely your civic duty and let your voice be heard. This is how, like I said, we're going to get funds allocated to the community. The different communities, we're going to get, like I said, things that we need done. So please go on there, complete the census. We would definitely, you know, like to thank Dr. Elba Garcia. For her words and wisdom and answering the questions that we had coming in, just letting us know the importance of going out and completing the census. We definitely like to thank you for that. We also like to thank our sponsors again. Tillison Law, the Honorable Carol and Dan Donovan, Honorable Terry Barker, Dr. Catalina Garcia, Hamilton and Wingo. Also, we have the Honorable Marcy Helfen and Dr., I'm sorry, Robert Book and Scott Perez LP. So Doc, so like as I said before, thank you again, Dr. Garcia for for your words and wisdom and answering the questions. And like I said, just informing and keeping engaged of the importance of the census. We definitely like to, and a shout out to the Chairwoman, Carol Donovan, also for help making this possible. So please, again, you know, WWW twenty census G O V. Make sure that you complete the census. And like I said, you know, thank you all for for tuning in. We we will have, like I said, we will have these going. So thanks again.
I can, you can, todos contamos. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Trey. Pleasure. You know, gracias, Carol. George, thank you so much. We're getting good at this zooming thing, huh?
Yeah, we got it.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Bye, Ms. Carol.
Thank you. All right, see you all.
All right.